Over ninety miles of creeks run through Santa Rosa. Run off from streets, roofs, and parking lots, end up in our creeks through the storm drain system. To help protect creeks, keep your street gutters and roadside ditches clear of trash and other pollutants. For more information on the benefits of our creeks and tips on how to enjoy them, visit the Stormwater in Creeks webpage.
Have you ever seen a flashing yellow arrow on a traffic light? I'm Rob Sprinkle, traffic engineer for the city of Santa Rosa, here today to talk to you about a new type of traffic signal. Beginning in 2013, flashing yellow left turn signals will be installed in some of the intersections in Santa Rosa. Studies show that drivers better understand the need to yield to oncoming traffic with a new flashing yellow arrow signal. These new flashing yellow arrow signals give drivers more chances to make left turns, but more importantly, they stress the need to use caution when turning left. Some drivers may be confused when they see a flashing yellow arrow because they're not exactly sure what to do. Let's run through how these signals operate. The green arrow means you have the right of way to make a left turn. All incoming traffic and pedestrians are stopped. The solid yellow arrow is a warning telling you the light is about to turn red. The red arrow means stop and wait. Now for the new part, a flashing yellow arrow. The flashing yellow arrow means you can make a left turn if there's a safe gap from oncoming traffic. Check for oncoming bicycles and pedestrians attempting to cross the intersection. Always yield to pedestrians as they have the right of way. If you don't see a gap in traffic, don't take a chance, just wait until the next green arrow appears. The city of Santa Rosa will be evaluating this new technology at locations throughout the city. It will be up to all of us to make sure we use them safely.
It's something that I really like. I went to Santa Rosa High School, so I like Santa Rosa. But I was from an area that was in the county at the time, Roseland. And now there's a Roseland County island because the city encompassed it when they did annexation out in the southwest about sixteen, seventeen years ago. And I got so concerned about all this stuff, I went and studied a bit of it. And I've spent some time trying to understand how we could solve some of the issues. And a pretty knowledgeable person once told me, well, take an issue that's really close to the city and try to solve that one first. So today I'm going to talk about a place called Boyd Street. Boyd Street is right over there, across the freeway, less than a quarter of a mile away, all right? It intersects with Sebastopol Road. It's partially in the city, right at Sebastopol Road. It might be in the county. I can't tell for sure because the maps haven't given me the correct information lately. Maps are like that. You have to stay up on it to know what's what. Well, Boyd Street has a serious problem. The city recently paved Olive Street to go right under the freeway at Highway 12. Think of the quadrants of the city. Highway 101 and 12 divide the city. And so that southwest quadrant starts right over there at Highway 12 and 101. They paved right up to where Sebastopol Road started, repaved it all nice. Then at Sebastopol Road, it's a mess. And Boyd Street is a mess. Because they had hoped to get a housing development put in there on the corner of Boyd and Sebastopol Road, but it didn't work out due to the economy. At least, that's what I've been told. I'm not privy to the important information. I just know the road is messed up, that the improvement that was supposed to happen has only been partial. So right now, the curb and gutter that was put in is not really protective of the people who ride bicycles and are out there on the road. So I'm asking all of you, perhaps not Ms. Cisco because she might know it, but the rest of you to please go to Boyd Street at Sebastopol Road, quarter of a mile as the crow flies, just under the blockhouse of the mall. If you want to get over there by car or bike, you can take the nice Santa Rosa Creek. Go see it. Then I'll come back and talk with you again. Today, I'll talk with you during the creek master plan also. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. And if you'd like, you can give me a call. I can give you some information about Boyd Street and what's going on down there. Okay. Any other members of the public wishing to speak under public appearances? Not seeing anyone rise, so I'll go ahead and close public appearances. And we'll move on to Planning Commissioner's Report. Any reports? Okay, Commissioner Duggan.
Yeah, just like to report, we had our monthly Art in Public Places meeting, and this month we had a special meeting. We got a private tour of the Doyle Art Collection at the Santa Rosa Junior College Library. And it's well worth visiting and seeing this wonderful amount of artwork, and it's all done by faculty and staff. And it's just an amazing display. And I had a private tour with the man, Scott Lipanovic, who's basically been the one spearheading the campaign to collect the art and choose the art and display the art in the library. So I urge everybody to go over there when the library's open and take a look.
Great, thanks. Anything else? And I can report that I attended the Waterways Committee meeting this month where we did get a review of the Creek Master Plan that we'll be reviewing tonight, so I've had a preview. With that, I'll move on to Department Reports.
Thank you, Chair Cisco. Just one item.
I'm not sure your mic is working.
I'll just come up to the podium. Just one item. We currently don't have any items set for the August agenda for the Planning Commission. July 23rd is our deadline, so if we do items, we'll let the commission know right away. And if we don't, we'll let the commission know right away as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Statements of Abstention by Commission Members. Anyone needing to abstain? And no one is, just good. All right. Moving right along with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our only item, item number nine, which is a public hearing on the Citywide Creek Master Plan. Erin Morris's staff.
Thank you, Chair Cisco, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm delighted to bring you the focused update to the Citywide Creek Master Plan at this evening's meeting. And my presentation, I'm essentially going to walk you through the process of developing this focused update to the Citywide Creek Master Plan, an overview of the plan and its different components, some of the issues that we believe we've resolved, and then I'll conclude by walking you through the public process that we embarked on as part of this update. So by way of introduction, the Citywide Creek Master Plan was originally adopted in 2007, and it provides guidelines, policies, and criteria to protect, restore, and enhance. At the time, it was ninety miles of waterway, and now we're at almost a hundred miles of waterway. It divides the city into watershed planning areas, and includes citywide proposals, and it also includes very site-specific proposals, kind of the full range of projects. So there was a scope of work developed for this focused update, and some of our main objectives were to clarify and reaffirm the goals and policies of the plan, since it had been five years since we had adopted it. We wanted to update the creek maps and the text of the plan to recognize change conditions along waterways, and also to acknowledge that a lot of projects were completed since 2007 as part of implementing the creek plan. We wanted to incorporate and plan for waterways that were not previously included, and I'll touch on which ones those are later on in my presentation. We wanted to revise the plan to be more user-friendly. The 2007 plan is two volumes that are thicker than the one that you have in front of you, some of you, so it was a very large document before and kind of challenging to navigate. We wanted to develop a system for prioritizing the creek master plan project, since there are a lot of them, and also to coordinate with the Sonoma County Water Agency, who owns approximately one-third of the creeks in Santa Rosa, as well as the County of Sonoma. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. So your role as the Planning Commission is to really provide a comprehensive review of the planned changes in the maps, and then you'll be able to consider the comments from the different boards and committee that have reviewed this plan before. Ooh, I'll pause for a second. You'll be able to review the recommendations of the other boards that have reviewed this plan before you, and you're to make a recommendation about whether or not to adopt the plan to the city council when they consider the plan in August. That's when it's going to be going to them. So there's five chapters of the plan. I'm just going to kind of briefly go through them and highlight some of the key topics from each chapter. Chapter one, the introductory chapter, has the most minor text changes. We wanted to reflect the current general plan and talk about the fact the plan was updated. And then also, we updated the watershed planning areas map exhibit, really to show the new western watershed planning area and the new Oakmont watershed planning area. Chapter two is Goals, Objectives, and Policies. And these, per the 2007 plan, are intended to provide a complete vision for an integrated and healthy creek system with many community benefits. And none of that has changed, and none of the goals and policies have changed substantially. We did some minor changes to reflect the parks' general plan policies. There was an update in 2009 that changed park policy, so that was after the creek plan was adopted. So we made sure that the language in the creek plan is consistent with the amended general plan relative to parks' policies. And also, we introduced some new proposed creek restoration projects on city park sites specifically. And that was in response to feedback and discussions with recreation and parks about some ways to help maybe make maintenance of those creeks easier and better for them, while also improving the health of the creeks. Also, in chapter two, in 2010 actually, since after 2007, the city has a new stormwater permit, and so the text in chapter two has been revised to reflect the low-impact development stormwater management requirements. And then it wasn't actually in our initial scope, but we added in an update to the Americans with Disabilities Act language. It wasn't up-to-date. I worked with multiple departments and individuals, and we think that the language in the updated plan is consistent with the law and will be effective in helping keep the city in the right direction. And then in chapter three, chapter three is really the physical changes that would occur with this plan, and this includes habitat restoration projects, creek trail improvements, and really all these other physical changes. So in this chapter, we did quite a bit of updating, not a lot of changing per se, but we added more information about stream maintenance and how it actually happens and kind of what the point of it is. Also, the same thing with creek restoration activities, better descriptions of what is involved, and a new table that shows the difference between preservation enhancement and restoration, so that kind of at a glance, you can see what kinds of activities are involved with each level of restoration. Also, since the plan was done in 2007, we've had some new flood hazard studies that have been completed. And so we took a look at the flooding section and updated it with some help from the water agency and some of our other technical experts. And then, along with that, also, kind of in concert with the water agency, the plan has more information about how some creeks in Santa Rosa really, they have to function as flood control channels, but they are not doing just that. They're trying to do a lot of things, in addition to moving the floodwaters to keep people safe. And lastly, in chapter three, the 2007 plan had a lot of detailed diagrams depicting how trails would intersect with streets. And when our traffic, our Transportation and Public Works staff looked at those, they were really all out of date. And it turns out, standards have changed since 2007, but also, the standards keep evolving, and people keep learning new things about how to effectively design these intersections. So we've taken them out of the plan to avoid having standards that are just not correct, but we haven't been able to replace them, except for we've replaced them with language that calls out what standards should be looked at and which guidelines should be evaluated when you're designing the intersection between a trail and a street. And then, part of, as I said, we had outreach with the water agency. Another kind of key change to the plan is that where the 2007 plan called for eliminating some of the water agency's unpaved maintenance access roads from one side of the creek to do restoration, we're actually proposing to keep those roads because the agency needs them in order to get out to do their maintenance activities. But also, the plan speaks to how having maintenance access does not exclude a restoration activity. And that's really what we've learned from talking to them. So that's another change. Primarily, that would be in the piner and pollen watershed planning areas. The old plan had certain places where you'd have two trails now, and then we were proposing to remove one, and now those trails have been restored as a feature that we plan to continue. Chapter four is the watershed-specific recommendations, and this is really the heart and soul of the plan. This is each and every creek, and a description of the biological characteristics and the features, and then a description of recreation access and transportation concepts. Where the 2007 plan had sixty eleven-by-seventeen tile maps, the new plan has sixteen maps that will ultimately exist as PDFs on the city's website, but more importantly, that information will be available in the city's GIS site. So if you're looking at a new development project, or the city's embarking on a capital improvement project, the maps will be interactive, and you can look at the creek plan in light of storm drains, or planned bicycle lanes, or other features that are already in our interactive GIS. And that will be true for the public, as well as for the city staff and for everyone that wants to utilize this plan. And so the text, it changes a lot in some places where we really rehabbed the whole section, but in some cases, the changes are really minor. And really, what we're trying to do is clarify existing conditions and clarify what's planned. The text, of course, is intended to match the map, so we wanted to make sure those two things were in sync. And then also, where something had changed, and sometimes the creek has changed a bit, or in a lot of cases, a project was completed, some of them creek projects, some of them nearby projects, we wanted the text to reflect current conditions. Also, in 2011, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan was updated, so we updated the text of the creek plan to be consistent with existing and planned bicycle facilities and pedestrian facilities where they're near creeks. And so that's also part of the text changes that you see in the plan. And then another one, this kind of came up as a result of our coordination with regional parks and also county PR&amp;D. The new creek maps go outside of the city's urban growth boundary a bit, because obviously, the creeks in Santa Rosa do not stop when they hit the urban growth boundary, they continue. So we made an effort to show the creeks as they're departing the city's ultimate limit, but also show how trails that are in the city, either planned or existing, tie in with planned or existing county trails. So the idea is to show these regional connections, because really, it all does tie together. And so that involves adding some things to these maps and adding some features to these maps, and involve coordination with regional parks to make sure we're showing their planned facilities correctly, and they were able to do that technical review for us. And then we have these two new watershed planning areas. Oakmont was included in the 2007 plan as part of the Santa Rosa watershed planning area, but because we added seven creeks in Oakmont, it really kind of warrants its own watershed planning area. So and then we also added the western planning area, which had been included as part of southern. Southern was sort of a big sprawling southwestern planning area, and so now western has its own section in the plan, and southern has its own section. And so there's a lot of additional creeks that got acknowledged, and these creeks were out there already, it's just that the 2007 plan didn't acknowledge them, didn't show them on the map, and didn't talk about them. So we added five creeks in Oakmont, and recognized two creeks in Rincon Valley, Nagasava Creek in Fountain Grove, and two creeks in West Santa Rosa. And so those have been added to the map. We haven't proposed change to these creeks, per se. We've called for, of course, preservation, like we've done for all the creeks, but we really just want to acknowledge that they're there and they're part of our creek system. And then, since 2007, believe it or not, two creeks have changed names. We didn't change the names, but they were changed. So Kiwanis Springs Creek is what used to be Upper Colgan, and Sierra Park Creek is what used to be Arroyo Sierra. So the plan, our plan now matches up with the water agency and USGS names. We're all kind of on the same page now. And then chapter five is the implementation strategy. And one thing this plan acknowledges is that some of the projects in this plan will be completed in years, and some of them will be completed in twenty or thirty, a long, long term. So the projects really represent a mix of very short-term, midterm, and long-term projects. So what we did is we created some new prioritization criteria. The 2007 plan prioritized the creek projects by watershed planning areas. There are basically seven lists of top priority projects. What we've done is actually tried to create and have created prioritization criteria by project type. So we've created these five different kinds of projects, like habitat projects, or parks' projects, trails, water quality, and flood protection, and then created some more detailed criteria for how would you figure out which ones were the most important or the most viable or should go forward first. And so that's the new implementation strategy, is to look at the list of projects with this new lens to sort out what the priorities should be, recognizing that we already have a lot of creek projects that are currently being worked on in the pipeline, so it doesn't necessarily run out and change course on some of the great work that the creek team is already doing. And then the maps, I said already, we went from sixty maps to sixteen maps, and we'll be going to the GIS-based maps shortly. But one of the things we also did was try to simplify the map key. The 2007 plan had the key that was on the map, and then a supplemental key that you had to find and pull out in order to decode all the things that were mapped. So we have one key now, and it's on each of the maps. And then we had different ways of depicting restoration areas or proposed restoration areas in the 2007 plan. So we've created a consistent method that uses these Rs that go on top of the creek. So whether it's a big restoration project or a little restoration project, the Rs are how you would know if you were looking at this map, oh, the city would like to have restoration happening here. And then you would go to the text, and it would explain what the conditions are and kind of what needs to be done. And then another key thing with regard to recreation and parks policies, the 2007 creek plan doesn't show city parks consistent with the general plan, and it shows a lot of things that are not planned as parks, as planned or potential. And it shows a lot of things that are not planned as parks, as planned or potential parks. So we cleaned all that up, and the maps for the creek plan now reflect city general plan parks, existing parks, proposed parks, totally consistently, to avoid any confusion about the city's plans. And then, the general plan, when it was updated for parks' policies, recognizes that there's these neighborhood parks, there's these community parks, but there's also smaller open spaces that are probably privately owned, but are open to the public, that create the kind of plazas and gathering places that people like to be in Santa Rosa. And of course, some of these will be near creeks. So the general plan doesn't have a designation on the map to show where they are. The text recognizes they could be in lots of places where they make sense. The creek plan had a few sites where we were calling for something that sounded a lot like a public plaza and gathering space, or place. So, we created the oak tree symbol to use to show those on the maps. And if you go to the text, the text explains that this is a good potential location for one of these kind of places. So that's my presentation of the five chapters, and of kind of the maps and the changes we've made. My next few slides kind of, I think, wrap up. You have in your packet the addendum that we prepared to the Santa Rosa Citywide Creek Master Plan EIR that was certified in 2007. We found that really, there's not a substantial change between the changes to the plan and the plan that was cleared through that EIR, but we documented that using an addendum. So you're to consider that when you're making your decision about your recommendation. And then, I touched on this briefly, but I really want to underscore, we spent a lot of time coordinating with Sonoma County and the Water Agency, because it really was to our benefit. So that's where the parks things that you see that are in the county, you can have some confidence that they really reflect the county's plans, because we had the county parks planners look at these maps and do a technical review to make sure that they were in sync. And the same thing with the Water Agency. We met with their maintenance staff and their operations staff, and we sent the plan to them for comment, and we incorporated some changes they recommended and requested. So ultimately, we think this plan is a collaboration that's been pretty successful. One of the goals of the updates, we're hoping that they will adopt, or embrace, or otherwise acknowledge this plan, so it becomes a shared vision between our three agencies and is therefore stronger. And there has been a lot of public participation with this plan. It turns out, a lot of people in Santa Rosa really love creeks. Those are mostly the people that came to our meetings, although we had developers and engineers and others who probably love creeks, too. We had two community meetings, one in December of 2012, and one in June, to share the plan. We had about 40 people at the first one, and a dozen people the second one. And people had comments and issues and questions, and we were there and we answered them. And generally, really, everything's very positive with the update. And then, in your packet, we did get one comment letter from the Southeast Greenway Campaign requesting some changes to the plan. And I'm kind of briefly discussing the staff report, but some of the changes we're recommending that we make, and those are in the Attachment A, Exhibit A document that you have. Some of the changes they were requesting were really detailed things about if you were going to do a restoration project, this is how you would solve the issue or problem that needs to be addressed through the project. And so, we felt, we don't want to get into that level of detail in the creek plan, it's still pretty broad stuff. But those kind of comments will be helpful when some of these projects in the Matanzas Creek planning area start to roll forward and the studies start. So that's why some of the changes recommended were not included, but we included the ones that we thought were appropriate. And then, I got a call today, you know, yesterday, from the Sonoma County Water Agency. Again, one of their maintenance folks, who was again checking out the plan in the final hours before the Planning Commission meeting. On the last page of the hard copy that I gave you of Exhibit A, they're requesting that three words be struck from Stormwater Policy 3 hyphen 3. It's really getting into technical detail here, but basically, the Water Agency does, on a regular basis, do an estimate of water carrying capacity of our creeks, but they don't always use flow models. In fact, they don't use them often because they're really expensive. So they wanted to have the, they thought that if this was out there, it might look like they have to do flow models, and they do when they can, but they don't always. So I said I was amenable to recommending that the Planning Commission strike those three words from that policy. And then, I got a call today from a gentleman who lives near a creek in Roseland, and was really happy about the creek plan and happy it was updated. First, he wasn't sure what it was and what we're doing, but he just expressed support for the city's creek stewardship program. And those are all the public comments I've gotten recently since the community meetings. And I just want to then let you know, lastly, I guess, or almost lastly, that your staff report summarizes the comments from these different boards and commissions, but I guess I just wanted to briefly touch on them. The Board of Public Utilities had a staff briefing, and they were positive, but it wasn't really a comment kind of a setup. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board talked a lot about how new creek trails are such an asset to the communities that they go in to provide alternative transportation. They wanted to have it acknowledged that creek trails provide a comfortable environment for people, as far as shaded areas versus being out in the Santa Rosa plain with no shade. So we did that. We actually made that change to the plan. But generally, they were very positive, and they were reviewing it under the lens of the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, and I thought that they were very supportive. And then, the other boards and commissions made a couple of comments. The main one that both the Waterways Committee and the Design Review Board pointed out is that the Santa Rosa Creek Design Guidelines, which are appendix in your plan, have not been updated. They're from 1997, I believe. And so, they really wanted to recommend that the council or the city consider updating those, because they can be a great design resource for projects near creeks. So, that was the other comment, the main comment I got from the outreach to the different boards and committees. So you have your Exhibit A, and then, and that's where, we just talked about the changes to that. And then, lastly, because of a quorum issue, you do not have the comments of the Board of Community Services, but the council will have them, so we're going to go present to them on July 24th. So with that, that's my presentation. We're recommending that you hold a public hearing, and that you consider the addendum to the EIR, and that you recommend that the city council adopt the updated Citywide Creek Master Plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff? Yeah, Commissioner Bird.
Erin, in the community process, talking about chapter five, the implementation strategy, was there any community input with regard to that? Can you talk a little bit, a little bit about how you arrived at that, or some of the comments? I'm kind of interested in how they would be prioritized. There was quite a list, according to Appendix X, Appendix F, excuse me.
Yeah, I'd love to speak to that. At the first community workshop, which had about 40 participants, we actually asked residents to give us input on how projects should be prioritized. And we were thinking about prioritizing, well, what's most important to you? Is it the habitat restoration projects, or is it the trails, or is it? And it turns out, most of them said, it's really hard to prioritize these things against one another, because they're all really important, and of course, we wish everything could happen. You know, it's, so it's really, it kind of underscored the difficulty of prioritizing one type of project over another. So that's where we realized that the city, and with the private development and with public development, we're often able to accomplish different kinds of projects in different situations. So rather than trying to prioritize, oh, restoration's more important than trails, let's develop ways of figuring out, what are the most important restoration projects? What are the most important trail projects? So that those projects can be elevated as far as what type of project they are and get worked on. And that was, it's hard to figure out how to prioritize stuff, but what we got from the citizens at our neighborhood meeting was, you can't make us pick, you know, habitat over trails. Like, they're both really important. And even though no one gave points, for example, to some of the stewardship activities, most of them were creek stewards. And of course, they understand that stewardship's important. So, that was our, our community input, was that it's all very important.
So as a staff, have you arrived at any dollar amounts for this total package kind of thing? And has there been some, you know, two, three, four, five-year outlook of where you could prioritize these to present to the council, or anything like that?
I think that's probably a next step. The 2007 plan and the appendix has cost estimates for all the projects that were in the plan at that time. And so, those would need to be updated, but rather than update the hundreds of them, it seems like perhaps applying these prioritization criteria, coming up with a list of projects, then going to the cost estimates, and then kind of deciding how to move forward would probably be the most logical pattern of events, I think.
Thank you. Wonderful job.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, yeah, Commissioner Stanley.
I have one little follow-up to Commissioner Bird's, is, does it make it difficult if we do it that way? As you're describing, sort of figure out what the priorities are, when you're going up for grant funding, is there a way to? Because sometimes, you get funding for something that may not rise to priority, but it is a way to get a project completed, because there's grant funding available. Maybe it doesn't rise to that level where it's at on everybody's radar. I'm wondering if there's some way to sort of bring that into the mix, because obviously, funding is the thing that stops all of this.
Well, that is one of the prioritization criteria, the overall criteria is, does this project have the ability to achieve multiple objectives? Because a lot of these creek projects actually hit three or four of these, maybe even all of these divided areas, but then also, potential for grant funding. So the idea is, rather than having a fixed list of priorities by watershed planning area locked down in the creek plan, having an adopted prioritization strategy would allow the city, the city staff, and others to be more flexible about bringing projects forward when they actually have the opportunity to get grant funded, or get tagged on to another project. But I think that's the idea, is to be a little bit more agile about moving our priorities forward.
One other question on the GIS update. That's probably the biggest tool I could see that the city has. It's a great tool, the GIS site. Is there some, is there funding to have that updated with all of this new information?
Well, the good news is, the creek plan update funded a utility staff person who's a GIS specialist, who, he did all these maps, and they're all set up to be imported into Silverlight. So they'll be in Silverlight, which is the newer GIS model that we're all sort of learning how to use. But yes, the plan is, if the council adopts the project in August, we'll be able to get it up on Silverlight really shortly thereafter.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah. Commissioner.
Thank you. Does the addition of those added creeks in this plan take care of all the creeks in the city and the urban growth boundary, or are there still more to be added in the future?
That is a great question. I think we've got them all. We, there are water features that are not, probably creeks, that, we had a question about one of them, for example, but I believe we've gotten all the ones in the urban growth boundary, and even those are the ones that are right around the fringes of the urban growth boundary.
Great. Thank you. Okay, yeah, yeah. Commissioner.
A couple of questions more, as it relates to implementation at this point. I'm not certain if this is the right time to ask these questions, or expect answers, I should say. But I was curious, in reading through the 2007 and the revisions, the plan, about, say, the experience over the last six years of trying to improve access to creeks and so on and so forth. If we've had many negotiated easements for access on the property, have we had to resort to eminent domain on any portions of it? And would you foresee any of that in the near term, in the near future, five years or so?
I'm going to try to start with the answer, and then maybe my colleagues from utilities will possibly jump in as needed. A lot of what's been accomplished since 2007 has been accomplished through grant funding, and has not relied on any of the tools you described. As far as I know, it's been more of a cooperative, collaborative approach, because those are the projects that you can actually get done quicker than some of the ones that require those heavier tools. But going forward for implementation, I think the city would continue to look to grant funding, to help fund projects where people are actually willing to be part of them. I mean, I can't say for sure, but that's, seems to be how we've generally approached the implementation of the plan so far.
Anything else? Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, so this is a public hearing, and I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And Duane Dewitt, you wanted to speak on this.
Hello, my name is Duane Dewitt, and I have an interest in this, because I was a member of the public going to the Roseland Creek Concept Plan meetings 10 years ago. And I want to thank Mr. Brady, Ms. Miller, other staff that have been working on this. This is a really good thing they're doing with this creek's update. I just want to draw your attention to something on page 85, where they were talking about the existing parks under parks and open spaces. I was hoping they'd mentioned that Roseland Creek Community Park, as they call it, as being a part of this. We call it Roseland Neighborhoods. It's a juvenile oak woodland near the creek, and the city has paid money, and it's going to be something nice in the future. And it leads into this section of Roseland Creek that you see up there. And that's really nice, to see that it's got the restoration marks there, and it's got that little oak tree symbol about the possible public space there. And there's just so many positive things about all this. I had wanted to make sure that you looked at pages 156 and 157, because this part of the creek is where you can have your most immediate effects in positive ways. And you were talking about the idea of how to bring in some extra funding, perhaps. And the approach I've been looking into is how to get federal funding for stormwater retention as a way to do creek restoration also. And I believe that these possibilities exist. On 156, you have that first Reach 1, and 157, you have Reach 2 for Roseland Creek. And the thing that we would like to see happen is that you understand you could begin right now having volunteers work out there on things, begin the process without having any money, then seek grant funding, reaching out to whatever sources at the State Department of Water Resources and the federal government at various agencies. It's important to include the volunteers in this process, and to have the city staff, especially in the legal department, find a way to make sure volunteers can work on these things, and that it's not violating SEQA. Right now, there seems to be some confusion and belief that anything that goes on out in parks in the Southwest will have to have some SEQA clearances. But it's like, they've been using the parks, and people have been on them, in the existing parks. Now you have a new one, you can find ways within SEQA to get things done without it being a violation. The city attorney takes the very conservative side. Us volunteers want to help as much as we can, to get as much done as possible, as soon as possible. So please, could you planning folks talk to those folks over there and say, hey, let's find these exemptions that we can do within SEQA? And please, read up on 156, 157, 158, then come out and see the Roseland Neighborhood on Burbank Avenue at Roseland Creek, easy to find across the street from the Roseland Creek Elementary School. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt, and thank you for all your years of persistence and work that have given us the result out there. So, we don't think we would be where we are without you. Okay, and next, Kathleen Emery.
I live over in the Town and Country area. Poppy Creek was redirected, and it actually sits on my property and makes a 90-degree angle, and then goes into a culvert. The culvert is about, maybe, a little bit more than a third full to a half-full of sediment. And last year, I had a call and have somebody come and help me, because I was really afraid it was going to maybe, over, the water coming through was going to overpower it. So what I wanted to talk about was a flood protection issue. First of all, how often are the culverts cleaned out? I've lived at my property for 20 years, and it has never been cleaned out. I do rake up a lot of leaves that are right at the edge of the culvert, and the city has come out a couple of times when I was desperate, and the water was rising. I wonder how many of our creeks in the, in the city do end up in culverts as a diversion? So they may be traversed under the city, or traversed behind neighborhoods, and Poppy Creek eventually runs into a reservoir. I'm wondering if that reservoir can handle the water, if we have a really major flooding, if it can, if it's drained at times, or the sediment's taken out? So this is my concern, because I think, basically, our water, our weather patterns are changing, and floods might be a real issue. And so, I'm just really speaking about the culvert cleanouts and where that water ends up going. So, and again, like Mr. Dewitt asked, if I do some work on my property to reinforce my banks, because deer come through and all that, am I held liable if something collapses? So this is something I would really love to have some kind of answer, because I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to do some reinforcement myself, or else I'm going to lose some of my land. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, great.
Yes, I'm Frances.
Yes, I'm Frances Diaz, former city planner here in Santa Rosa. And I'm here on, from a different organization this time, Oakmont. And as far as your plan goes, I really don't have any direct comments about that. What we're concerned about out there is that every creek has two to three names and it seems to be the property of either the city, the county, or Oakmont. So when we have overgrowth, growing in the various creek beds, we either have to get a permit from the city or we have to hassle with the county for it. And, and I'm not sure that you would agree what, what, what the county says that we may do or what an individual may do because the property happens to be that of Oakmont. I don't know how you tackle this problem, but we would like a clarification. The largest creek, of course, is, is Oakmont Creek, which becomes Badger Creek, and I think it has two other names too. So we, at the present time, what we're doing is coming to the city to get a permit to clean out some of the debris and the, what is, not, I know the name of this tree, but I don't, anyway, cattails and this tree just multiply like nobody's business. And it's fine, but then we go on somebody's property and they're concerned because they haven't been involved in getting the permit and they may like what's in there. We have one, this, actually, it is this Badger Creek that goes past one of our community centers. And when it overflows, the, it cannot get over the road. So it's supposed to be tunneled underneath, but when the, when the debris is not taken out of the creek, it goes over the road and into the houses across the street. So these, we're not asking you to do anything. We just wish you would look at this problem and see if we can't find a responsible civil organization to take care of all of the creeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz, and thank you for all your many years of service for Santa Rosa. And anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I'm not seeing anyone else arise, so I'm going to go ahead and close public appearances. And would staff like to come back up and maybe address some of the concerns that have been raised, if you can?
I'll do my best and then we do have staff from the utility stormwater creeks team who could jump in if I don't do it well enough. So creeks are owned in different ways in Santa Rosa like they are all places. Some creeks are privately owned. Some creeks are privately owned, but the city has an easement over them. And in some cases, their creeks are actually owned by the water agency. And that's a third of the creeks in Santa Rosa are actually owned by the water agency. So for creeks that have a city easement over them or water agency creeks, the city or the agency maintains those creeks, but not for aesthetic reasons, purely for flood control, basically. So that's, that's what we do. So if we get a call, the city gets a call or complaint about a situation wherever in the city, Oakmont or any other part, staff will go out and evaluate, is this situation causing flooding, potential flooding issues, safety issues, that kind of stuff. If the creek is privately owned or the culvert's privately owned, it really is the property owner's responsibility. And I think our creeks team tries to give it, you know, good advice and, and suggestions. But there are many cases where creeks are owned by private individuals and when there's issues, they are expected to, when they need to, they have to address them. Along with that, in certain parts of Santa Rosa, there are more species and endangered issues than other parts, but essentially, a lot of times, work within a creek channel can trigger a permit from California Fish and Wildlife or the Regional Board. It depends on what you're doing. So it's really important for maintaining privately owned creeks to be careful and kind of line up your ducks before embarking on these activities. Because a lot of stuff you can do that does not trigger a permit, but there's things that you'd be doing in the creek that could, in fact, trigger a state, state permit. So that's the answer I have in a nutshell. There's other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them too.
I guess I have one question about, are creeks that are privately owned, are they somehow identified? Like, and seeing that in the creek master plan, are there stretches or like a whole creek? I mean, how, how would somebody know they owned their creek?
Well, we get calls quite a bit and we, I just worked on one yesterday, actually. It was, it was a mystery creek because when you clicked on, there was no property or information on it. It was Matanzas, sort of near downtown. But, but we get calls a lot and people ask us, the creek plan shows the channels that are owned by the water agency. We have those color-coded, so that's a way that you would know, oh, this channel behind my house is owned by the water agency. They're the ones that do the maintenance that does occur. If it, if it's an easement situation, they probably need to contact the city and describe their property and we'll, we'll help them figure that out. Because those are not something you can see in the creek plan.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Yeah, Commissioner Stanley?
So I, this is just sort of a practical problem that I would see. And we have flood control issues that are associated with the creeks. We have some creeks that are culverted, some that are open and some that cross private property. And I would imagine culverts across private property, how is it that you deal with that? How does the city deal with that in terms of flood control issues if, for instance, we have this property here that has a culvert that's filled up with sediment and maybe it's filled up with sediment through three, four, or five properties? How does, from a flood control standpoint and also just from a private property owner's responsibility, how do you deal with all of that so that we don't exacerbate a problem that becomes more of a citywide issue?
Going to look to either Rita or Steve to jump in because it's not, it is not an uncommon situation that you described.
Usually what would happen on a situation like that where it's private to private is really not a city issue, but one thing that comes to mind is we have a stormwater ordinance and part of that ordinance is about, is about impeding the flow. So if there was a situation that was impeding the flow and causing flooding, we could do something under that. But usually it's more of a civil matter between the two property owners if there's.
Even if it creates a flooding situation for property owners that may not have that on their property? I mean, if you, if you have a culvert on your property, it's private property, but it's affecting from a flood control standpoint, it could affect numerous properties within the city. Is that, does the city take control of that? Or is that just becomes, you wait till it floods and then the, and then the private property owners fight it out?
Well, it can, like I said, we can get involved under that thing about impeding the flow. And we have had a situation in the past where somebody had a culvert for a driveway that was undersized and it was causing flooding upstream and we did use that. But usually first it's, they try to work it out between the property owners if they can and then if it escalates, we have done that in the past.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Commissioner Dill.
Yeah, I just wondered if you could address Mr. Dewitt's question about volunteerism on the creek and how they should handle, you know, who they should deal with, what they can and cannot do on the creeks.
Molly Dillon from the city attorney's office. Good evening. I'm, I'm not sure of exactly what Mr. Dewitt was referring to, but I'm, I'm going to make a guess. And I think what he's talking about is that for work to happen on a park, an area that we've purchased that's designated as a public park, we have to have a master plan in place to, that talks about what does the public want to have happening at that park? What's allowed to be built as far as development and what kind of development and where? On Roseland Creek, I can tell you, the parcels that are part of the park are covered by a conservation easement with the open space district. And that was part of the funding for that park. So there are also those considerations of what can and can't be done and where it can be done, protected areas, et cetera. Anytime you do a park master plan, that's a project under SEQA and it does require compliance with SEQA environmental review. So I'm not sure if there were specific, I don't know of any specific requests that were denied by our office, however. Not sure what he's referring to there, but I, hopefully that generally helps address the question.
Okay. Any other question? Yeah, Commissioner Gronk.
Kind of a tag on, I think, to some of the discussion about maintenance and, say, management of the creeks throughout the area. How do you work with, especially the Sonoma County Water Agency, if on their property they have an impediment to, say, appropriate, you know, creek management on that property? Do you ask them to remove that? Do you work together in getting that done? Does the agency respond to you at all? I'm just curious how that works. And also related to, to a certain degree, I think it was the Water Advisory Committee recommended the use of permeable materials as an alternative on some of the trails, whatever, and that the county agency, I think, was asked to remove, in reading, my reading, if I understood right, a maintenance access road, but they said they needed to continue to have it and to have it paved. Is there any way that you could, say, assuming that is correct, that they need to have it firmly compacted and usable by a vehicle, a maintenance vehicle? Would the county in that instance, as well as the city, entertain the use of replacing that path, that stretch of path or roadway access with permeable materials?
I will start with the permeable materials question. The existing maintenance access roads that were originally, some proposed to be removed and now they're going to be kept, are actually unpaved compacted surfaces. So the agency doesn't require that they're paved in order to use them. They're actually all, all unpaved unless someone's gone in and paved them for, you know, public trail use, basically. So they don't need them to be paved. The permeable pavement issue was actually suggested to us by regional parks to make sure that we had language in our creek master plan that talked about the use of permeable pavement where possible. So we have that language. The Waterways Advisory Committee suggested trying to strengthen it or make it more, more powerful. I looked at it, it really, the plan, it says now to consider permeable pavement where feasible and we think that's probably sufficient guidance to try to get that to happen. With regard to the maintenance of things between the agency and the city, it's really a partnership, as best I can tell. The agency actually funds one half of the city's creek steward position. And so the city creek steward goes out on monthly cleanups, actually weekly cleanups during certain times of the year, supervising adult crews doing the work that the agency has asked to be done. So the city and the agency really work hand in hand on maintaining different facilities. And I, does that answer your question? Okay.
Any other questions, the staff? Okay, so then I'll bring it back to the commission. How about if you start, Commissioner Stanley?
Well, I want to commend Aaron and city staff and everybody who worked on this for bringing clarity or even greater clarity to this document, which is critical to not only restoring, but preserving and enhancing the creek environment within the city. So I commend you on that. I also want to just support, maybe to some degree, what Mr. Dewitt had said. The idea of volunteerism, I'd like that to be somewhere in, in our documents that encourages that and allows that to happen so that people who are, have the time or inclination to help with this work that is going to take a long, long time. It's a long plan. And if we can have some language in there that encourages that and ways to do that to get around the laws and SEQA and everything else, that would be wonderful too. And everything else. I want to support everything that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board and the Design Review Board, the recommendations that they placed forward as well. I think to have creek design guidelines that are from 98 when virtually all other design guidelines within the city, including general plan zoning and every other document that relates to it, has been updated, but we're still that far behind. I don't, I think that that is a problem. So having said that, I support the, the passage for the recommendation to council to adopt this update. Thank you.
Commissioner Bird?
Great job with the, with the report and also with the document itself. I appreciate a lot about the document, particularly the way that the boards, the city boards and commissions have collaborated and brought their information and comments into the report. Also, the Sonoma County Parks and Regions and the Water Agency, as well as the Permit and Resources Department. I think it kind of makes what we're doing in the county and what we're trying to accomplish kind of brings it to a cohesive unit. And I will be supporting the staff recommendation.
Commissioner.
I also, of course, appreciate the work of city staff on this, particularly the integration with regional parks and the water agency. That's really, really important to successful work. And also the, those regional connections moving out a little bit outside the urban growth boundary, recognizing that it is a watershed that's connected and not just defined by our city boundaries. And I really like the implementation plan being focused on prioritization criteria, giving staff some flexibility and also being able to give a really clear image to the public about when projects are prioritized, why that was done and what the criteria were. So, thank you. I support the recommendation of the city council to adopt.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yeah, I'm also in full support and I commend you for all the hard work. And also like, just the streamlining of the maps. I remember looking at the first iteration of this plan and trying to figure out how the maps coordinated with each other. And this is much, much cleaner, much easier to follow. I, like Commissioner Stanley, Chair Stanley, I am strongly in favor of implementing, like, including the bike ped board comments and also the DRB comments as far as updating the guidelines. I think that's really important. And also, as Commissioner Martin just said, about making it clear to the public how things get funded. I know that the last, the outbound reach of the Santa Rosa Creek Trail between Fulton and Willowside, basically, I think it was bicycle and pedestrian money that made it possible because of the funding of those bridges. Otherwise, that trail would not have been prioritized and completed and paved. So I'm very much in favor of the plan and thank you for your hard work.
Commissioner Gronk.
I, I fully endorse this plan and I congratulate the consultants, the staff, the various committees, the advisory groups and so on that have worked on this. I thought a very well-written plan, intelligent and something that I, I think is extremely valuable to not only the city of Santa Rosa, but certainly Sonoma County. I would also have a question or two or encourage, and it may relate back to the matter of volunteerism, but if we do have any relationship or ongoing relationship with either Sonoma State University or the J.C., their environmental studies programs, so on and so forth, life science programs, whomever, I would encourage as much involvement with both the college and the university and hopefully engage students either in research or, you know, get down and dirty and use it as an education and training experience for those folks. We did that before the college at the Petaluma campus when we did not reroute Capri Creek there and we turned that into a study area for our programs there and also contribute, in that case, I think it is to city at Petaluma in terms of maintenance of a valuable creek in that particular area. I'd like to see the same for, for this, if it isn't already occurring as well.
And Commissioner Karsten?
Excuse me. I echo everything that's been said here, so I won't repeat the eloquent and thoughtful comments that have been made, other than to, just maybe just a couple. One- One, the additional 10 miles of creeks that were incorporated here, I think is interesting and I think that's great. And I don't know where they were half a dozen years ago, but I'm glad to hear, see that they're part of this plan now. The interactive map component and the priority criteria, I think is very interesting too. You've arrived and come to that. I think it's gonna be very helpful. The other comments made about the updating the design guidelines, I wholeheartedly endorse. And I guess I'll close by saying I look forward to the day when the wonderful, beautiful artwork that's part of our, part of the book here, we really, this is really what it's gonna look like and look forward to that day.
Okay, great. Well, before I echo everyone else's comments, one of the benefits of being on the Waterways Committee is to learn from Alistair Blackfist and some of the individuals here, how well-coordinated a volunteer program we really have and how much activity is being done by volunteers in the creek. It's amazing what's really being done for these creeks and the volunteer efforts and how well-coordinated and sustained it is. So I'm sure Alistair is, on any opportunity he can, expand that framework and whatever is legal, he would probably manage to promote. So, feel comfortable that a lot of that is already going on and it's incredible. The Waterways Committee is probably the, it's just the most fun committee. It's just really great to see what's happening here in the city. So with that, I also appreciate, I love the 2007 document, even with all the maps. I really like the maps. But I was astounded at how comprehensive that document was. And I think it's a tribute to how well-done that first document was, that this one can be, you know, pulled together and simplified as well as it is. Appreciate the GIS system and the maps. It's gonna make it much more current and user-friendly. And I also support passing on to council the recommendation that they take a look at updating our creek guidelines. It was kind of a shock to look back and see how old those were. And I know that it becomes problematic and one of the things that the city council is looking for is efficiency and predictability in the development process. And I think that would go a long way to aiding particularly design review in being able to do that work if those were updated. And so with that, I am supportive of it also. And would someone like to read a resolution?
I'll read a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa recommending that the city council adopt the citywide creek master plan update file number ST10-004. Way of further reading of the text.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and your votes, please. We need to do that over.
Reset. Peter pushed my button.
Peter's good at that. Okay, and that passes with seven ayes. Thank you. Some anxious vice chair pushed his button twice, yes, prior to the motion being made. So, and with that, we'll adjourn our meeting to whenever our next one is, which probably won't be August. So.